Hello Mayor and Council, my name is Lee Elliott Wilkins. And I do quite a few things around town, but my big one is that I am an owner with my husband, Fisher's Peak Outfitters, and we are a tourist-based business. We do love our locals, they supply us, like Joe was saying, with our year-round income. But we really do need the tourists in our store to help us provide that service of having us open in the winter for our locals. Because otherwise, we can't make it throughout the year. We also provide experiences, fly fishing, and we also do free camping and backpacking. We're working on getting maybe some paid camping and backpacking as well for different things. I also have started the Trinidad Arts Festival, because I came to town, because I came for arts. Back in 2018, when Kirby Stokes at the museum did the arts residency program, I was the first one. So I came here for the arts. And I really want to help promote the arts in Trinidad as well. We have some great galleries, and I think being centrally located between Denver and Santa Fe really sets us up for that. I'm also on the Main Street Board, and I'm going to quick aside to air real fast. So the Main Street Board is actually helping with that picket wire and NISA to help with digital storefronts. We have a whole bunch of stuff through DOLA and Main Street, so let the Main Street Board do that economic revitalization. That's their piece. And they want to. So we're working on that one. I'm also on the Main Street Board, and what I really think I bring to that board is a lot of organization. I originally started my career in nursing, registered nurse, then so for over a decade, I worked in ICU straight out of school. And I went from ICU to being a charge nurse pretty quickly, to also working in code situations. So I'm kind of used to walk in there and be like, hey, this, this, and this, it's organized, it's good it done. And working in cooperative manner as a charge nurse, and with lots of different attitudes and personalities. What we do for Fisher's Peak Outfitters, we do quite a few different things to help drive our tours to our store. But our most effective is our online ad campaigns. Our online ads is that we actually use Google to do something called Geo Events, which I've set it up so that as soon as someone enters Rotone or Trinidad with a zip code, they will, they Google any sort of things, my business comes up first. One of the things that is our biggest driver is hunting and fishing licenses. Because a lot of people will come into Trinidad, they want to recreate hunting or fishing, and say, hey, come to Fisher's Peak Outfitters and buy your license with us. Once we get them in the store, we have a wonderful opportunity to tell them all about Trinidad, all about the different things going on in Trinidad, about the fishing. There's a huge group of locals that actually do hunted guiding, and that's sort of a major portion of their business. And I think that that's a bit of a business from our local community that's really been left out on a lot of our advertising. And also our arts as well. So, you know, we have so many wonderful assets. It's really a shame that we've kind of been, for lack of a better word, just kind of throwing stuff at the wall and seeing what sticks. And what's really nice about digital stuff is that you can see who clicks on your ad, and see if they came to your store or called your store. And if we can do that just with a little shop, imagine what we could do with a whole city. You know, there's so many people who say, oh, come to Trinidad, they frequently just stop for gas or a bite. Let's try to start enhancing the visitor experience from a quick stop for gas to visiting the downtown, trying out some different restaurants, and going to different shops. You know, it's not just the new shops that need this. I had a very old shop owner this week actually tell me she had her worst people ever. And I just find that really unacceptable. We're a great place, and I think that we can really help everybody in town. So I really think that we need to have a cohesive plan for all that really focuses on media and focuses to make sure that everything looks and feels like Trinidad. And then really have that data-based marketing. I agree with a lot of everyone, but I, I really think that Trinidad needs to choose its own tagline. What is Trinidad? Is it the city of champions? Is it Trinidad loves company? Is it old west town that wasn't entertaining? Is it Trinidad true outdoors? Is it sectioning capital? I mean, there's so many taglines that have been assigned to Trinidad without Trinidad having the opportunity to choose its own. So I think that we could easily and pretty quickly ask our citizens what they want to be. You know, are we the gateway of Colorado? What are we? And then just take that, and then we can put it up on our stuff, and then feel a real sense of pride altogether with that. And I think that'd be a great way to bring everyone together as well. And I really want to focus on arts-based entertainment, outdoor-based entertainment, because that's mine, but also, you know, family-friendly. I guess I'm just kind of that person that I grew up just doing stuff with my parents and my grandparents, and I just would love to see more family-friendly activities in Trinidad as well. And that's kind of the things that I'm working on.
Questions?
So, you mentioned art. Do you think Trinidad's doing an effective campaign to promote artists tourism?
Unfortunately, I really don't. And it's really a shame, because you know, you do have people who are actually paying rent to the city in art space. And they, when speaking to some of them, do feel that left out on some of the ad campaigns? And being that it is something that the city has renters of and is promoting, I think it would be good to do a little bit more of the art, which is why I started the Arts Festival. Like, I've been so busy trying to promote Trinidad and doing stuff, I didn't have a chance to make any art myself. But I really believe in our artists here in town, and I really believe in all of our really cool galleries. But let's be honest, you know, our 8,000-plus citizens can only buy so much art. We really do need those tourists in here to buy our local, and all these people who make our art here, they're locals, and they live here. And have them, you know, pump that money back into our local economy to buy that art.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're on Historic Main Street Boards?
Yes.
Can you do justice to two boards at one time?
Yes, ma'am. So I actually, this is a little bit tough. To our financial stretch personally, we hired another person so I could do more and volunteer more. And that's tough. But I believe in Trinidad so much that I'm willing to personally take a hard financial hit to do so.
I don't really have a question, but I think it's really good that you got with Joe, with the bicycle shop, that stores get together and coordinate a lot of stuff. And I think that's really good, because a lot of the stores, you don't really want competition between you, but you want to get coordination, to get people to come here. So I think that, that's really a nice idea of getting together and doing stuff to promote the town itself and the different businesses.
I appreciate Tarantula and everything that they're doing. We promote them. Joe's wife is one of our employees, and we want them and Ultimate Sports to dwell. Like, I, so much so that I purposely don't purchase things that my customers ask for, and I purposely send them to Tarantula, things for bikes, bike gloves, bike, you know, we still have the bike helmets, but we're raising those out, but other accessories. Because I want, I want them to succeed.
That's nice.
I noticed that you said that you, I remember from Main Street, are just generally collaborate with Welcome Center. How do you think that has gone, and can it be improved, or what ways do you think the Tourism Board could advise the city about how it can make that center be useful?
That's a great question. I've had always really positive experiences whenever I go to the tourism, mostly just getting the paper literature they give us to hand out. And like I said, I've always had really positive experience. I know specifically during the Arts Festival last year, when the bus from Colorado Springs of Tours came down, they stopped at the Tourism Center and said, hey, where's the Arts Festival? And they directed us, them to the Arts Festival, which was awesome, how a bus pull up. It was really cool. But I think, oh, how do I utilize this center better? It's a great question. I don't know if I have a really excellent answer to that. I'm one of those people that, I'm not going to just say something, I'll research it and then get back to you. Yeah.
Do you think your, your tagline would be for Trinidad?
I, I have thought of a few, but you know what, I really want to put it out to the citizens of Trinidad. I really do. Because I think that there's probably someone out there that's got the, like, the awesome idea, and we just haven't given them that chance to say it again.
Thank you for being here, Lee. And this may seem off, but I'll ask you a similar question, and I will ask Joe, and hopefully, it's a question you can answer. Right now today, is Trinidad fishing destination as it stands? If, if so, what can we do to make it better? And if not, what can we do to establish it as?
As a fishing destination, I think Trinidad has great potential, but there are a few things that are holding it back. First of all, let's be honest, the river's full of trash. And the people of the Purgatory River, along with us, and a whole bunch of other volunteers, once a month, go down and pick up trash. I have pulled, last year I pulled two tires, I pull up six or seven bags personally, with weight or some out of the river, with blankets and sweatshirts from our campment people trying to wash things in the river, and then just going down the river. So that's a huge challenge. And I think, you know, the stuff, the river is amazing, and you do need to talk with the irrigators, talk with our Corps of Engineers, but there are some ways that it can improve. But we need to make sure that everybody's in a room giving their personal bit about it, because it's a complicated issue. But I think that we are doing, my husband actually, I'm not a part of this one, because I'm doing the Arts Festival. He is doing the international fly fishing film series, Main Street Live. All the proceeds of that go to the Purgatory River Anglers Association, which is a child home day chapter and a nonprofit, to help revitalize the river, to help stock the river, to do children's programming. And of course, then it goes to the Main Street Live people. So, I mean, it's just trying to spread, take what we can do and spread it to as many businesses and as many people in this town. So. But yeah, fly fishing, I think it can be. I really do. We have a lake, there's awesome game in the lake, going into the lake is awesome. The river, I think, could be an excellent destination. But we might have to do something like a stock it, and then maybe do a catching release only so that fish get really big. We also might have to make sure that a little bit of flow stays here, but I'm going to not talk about that, because that is very controversial. So, that would take some studies.
All right, thank you.
You mentioned earlier in your presentation that, you know, one of the things that you've noticed in town is that there are different things that were thrown on the wall to see what sticks. Is there any one or two items that you can think of that, that happened?
You know, it's really interesting, because I have been trying to research the Tourism Board. I'm, I'm big on research, maybe ask the Nurse Brian to me. I have been trying to go back and like, listen to some of the older parts that Mr. Murphy puts online. And I know a while back, everyone was really talking about like, architecture, but it just sort of seemed to really stick, even though we do have amazing architecture. But, you know, that one almost like, well, it kind of just fizzled out, it seemed. Maybe we could revitalize it. I think maybe it'll be easier to do outdoor rec right now, and then do art, and then work on the historic preservation piece. You know, I think it all has to kind of all happen, but sometimes it's easier to pick the easiest thing first and get it done well.
Well, you know, one of the things that I've been mentioning for years now is that we need to concentrate not only on the downtown area, but also, what I'm thinking of is Los Angeles County as a whole. Because there's a lot of other things that we have in the county that are, could be tourist attractions. You know, one is the dinosaur tracks, you know, the thing is, you know, the, I think they're working on now where the prisoners in Capitol was during World War II. We have Ludlow, you know, we have things up, up the river. There are so many other things that are available, that I think that to create an entire destination, we need to be inclusive of all these areas in it, for people to want to come to stay an extra couple of days. So I think that's something that really needs to happen.
Yeah, I actually already read, you know, take people out to dimes or tax for free a couple of times a year, just so that, you know, let them know it's, it's a long hike, it's a long day, you know, some people bike, some people hike. It is a wonderful resource. And I absolutely agree with you. I do think that, you know, when you have such a big project as it is, and marketing Trinidad, and all this assets, and then also marketing Los Angeles County, sometimes they said the best thing to do is to pick a couple of things and do them really well. And then move on to the next thing, and do that really well. Because sometimes, you know, I saw this when going through some historical research with, with where I'm currently sitting on, there are 27 projects, and only three of them got out of play. So let's pick some good ones, get them done well, move on, move on, move on.
And I, you know, I agree with you there, is that one of the parts starts is a retreat, sit down and do a strategic plan.
Yeah.
What do you want to do the first year, second year, third year?
Correct.
Those are the type of things that need to be done, to be able to move the entire marketing plan in the direction that we're going to have success in five years, in 10 years, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, not just stretch, but at least it's a vision that you have to create. I don't know, you know, I know that you started an arts group of some sort, from what I understand, there are other art groups in Trinidad or, how many are there?
There, there are a couple of art groups. I do belong to two of them, one I am the founder of, the other one is the Trinidad Arts Council. They usually do the Make Art Fair, and they usually do the youth programming, that is their mission, to get arts out into the community, especially to the youth. The Trinidad Arts Fest is really simple, that's a very simple mission, to create a yearly outdoor arts festival in Trinidad. The nice part about the outdoor arts festivals is that they can get very large, they can be a huge tourist attraction, but also, they pay sales tax to the city. So if you can imagine having 100 artist booths, and people eating in our downtown, and doing all those things, and all those artists paying sales tax to the city, that would be a nice little bump. That's what I hope to do. Last year, we had 15 artists, you know, we are starting small. This year, I hope to have 30. We have 31 applications, so hopefully, you know, we're getting there. We have two more weeks until our application closes. It's a mix of people from out of state, we have people, you know, who have applied all the way from Florida to Wyoming, Utah, and Albuquerque. And so that's really exciting to also bring in some artists and have them next to our local artists.
And the reason why I brought that question up is that, I think whenever you have different organizations doing the same thing, and I've always said, why not combine them? And have one commission, or one board, or whatever, I think that that would be better than having, you know, two, three different ones.
Yeah.
And I think that would be important, and I think that's going to accomplish, that could be, your work could be accomplished by doing that.
Yeah, but those are private nonprofits, they're not city boards.
Right.
So, yeah.
Bringing them together, I think that would be, you know, part of it, is inviting a group and bringing these people together, along with the Chamber of Commerce. Something as, you know, you're aware of, is that we've been working on the rear revisioning, and how that's going to play out. I think that over the next few years, hopefully, we can get something done with this, is I've been calling it the trifecta that we would have in Trinidad. You know, the rear vision, which could be a great asset, we also have two state parks. So, out of those three, how do you feel that it would change the tourism in this area?
Well, first and foremost, I really don't want to change Trinidad. My whole goal is to just restore it to the way it was when it was bustling in the 70s. I look at those pictures. And, you know, people have a lot of fun stories from that time of being able to go around and play, and, and recreate with their families. And I think that that's really where we need to focus, is just bringing people into, do those things. I don't know which one is going to be, this is, it's hard to say what's going to be the best asset five years from now, until we know. But the new state park does have a lot of mileage, it's pretty cool. The lake is really wonderful. I think everything can be good, but once again, those are CPW questions. We can only control what happens to the river in our town, because that's city property.
Well, you know, and I think that working together with CPW is important as well. That's the thing to the thing. We, we need to start thinking, not one particular entity, not ourselves, but the other entities, you know, but the Corps of Engineers, and the CPW, Purgatory Watership, and all these groups, we need to kind of have some sort of visioning together. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lee. Jason, Jason Decker?
It's okay, I have a short presentation.
Is that the same one that you put the link on your application?
It is.
Good.
Yeah, it's the same type of, I was like, oh, it's a track.
There's no way this, this old mind could do that.
Okay, Mayor, Council, thank you for having me here today. Before I start with my presentation, I just want to mention how inspired I was from this last weekend. The town was buzzing, there was multiple events going on, some of them were directly with people in this room, and I wanted to thank them for their efforts. We saw something for everyone, really. There was art going on, there was music all over town, there was a comedy festival, there was seeing the streets shut down for the Cinco de Mayo event, and the town was buzzing, there was lots of tourists, and I really felt like it was a really, just like, really inspirational and really like visionary of how it could look every weekend in the summer here in Trinidad. So, jump into my presentation now. Yeah, so I'll just do a little bit of information about me, some of my credentials, why I'm in Trinidad, why I think I would be a good candidate, my experience in tourism marketing, and how to drive tourism and lodging revenue. So I have 20 years of digital marketing experience, 10 of that is directly in tourism marketing, and six of that is in Colorado tourism marketing. So I actually moved to Colorado to work for a marketing firm that's focused specifically on, on tourism marketing. And what they did is their clients were small towns, Airbnb wasn't even around at the time, boutique hotels, B and Bs, vacation rentals, things like that. And a lot of them were very small towns, a lot of them, I can't even remember the names, they were so small, but they were a lot of places that people didn't know. So rather than just trying to get people, at the time, like, Uray was one that a lot of people hadn't heard of, it's gained some steam now, but back then, you had to share information about Uray to try to get them to come there, and that's a lot of what we worked on, is creating articles, and 25 things to do with Uray, and then kind of stuff like that. And I did that over quite a few different municipalities around Colorado. And that really made me follow up with Colorado mountain towns. From there, my expertise is in Facebook, and Google advertising, website development, search engine optimization, which is just making sure that when you search for something on Google, you come up at the top, and video advertising. I've been the CEO of my own web marketing firm, three different e-commerce companies, one of them I actually just sold last week. And, yeah, one of them had over a million dollars per year in revenue, so they focused very heavily on digital, and none of us actually had any print media at all. And I am the current co-owner with my wife, Keely, of the Well Hotel and Tap Room here in Trinidad. And we are coming up on our one-year anniversary.
Yay.
Yay. So some of the clients that I've worked with, before Keely and I came here to Trinidad, I worked on the Cataculla Hotel in, in New Orleans, as well as with my previous job I mentioned, the Hotel Telluride, which is the signature hotel in Telluride, when I was working on it 15 years ago, Telluride, because it wasn't a household name like it is now. And Domino's Pizza Canada, I handled the digital marketing campaign for 440 locations at the time in Canada, which was all the locations. So my tourism marketing experience, really what my focus on is creating internet interest first, before anyone's going to come there, they need to know about it, and awareness, and smaller, or call mountain towns, that it turns into lodging and tourism revenue. So, as mentioned before, creating area and recreation articles, you know, writing about our trails, our, our biking trails, what is there to do in the area, things like that. And that helps inspire people through doing research and make them want to come here. Website development, and making sure that, you know, when they are searching for what's to do in Trinidad, right now I think it's an area of improvement, because most of the information found is coming from third-party websites, and it should be coming from us, because we can tell our story the best. And these are things that can be done, you know, pretty easily overall, and very cost-effectively, if not completely free.
I like the sound of that.
Yeah. Very quickly, I, I can have something whipped up by the end of this meeting. Maybe two of them at the rate that it's going. Stuff like Google and Facebook and video marketing campaigns. If you go on, Google's the biggest search engine in the world, and that is where most people start their research on an area, they're on a, on a vacation, on when they're gonna, when they're gonna go somewhere. And YouTube as well, that is the second biggest search engine. I think having a, a nice video about something about Trinidad, tell our story there, rather than having people that have visited and getting their perspective, I think we could do it. And again, this is the kind of stuff that we could do it on our phone in an afternoon, you know, it wouldn't, it might, it might not be like world-class, but it can look really fantastic, and we can do this stuff really quickly, really efficiently, and really cheaply. Some of the areas I marketed, get the Springs, Telluride, Denver, Steamboat, Ludville, Crest of Bees, Silverton, Durango, Uray, Manatee Springs, and now Trinidad. You know, day-to-day, I am marketing Trinidad for our business, the Well Hotel and Tap Room. We have a lot of tourists come in, a lot of them are, I'm talking to them right when they go off the highway. So there, there's their first impression in town, so we're able to, you know, really sell Trinidad, tell them what to do, where to go, what's special, so it's, it's a really nice opportunity to, to get people right when they come into town and, you know, and tell them our story. Tell them where they have, you know, music and art going on, which is, you know, a huge draw in this town. We have an incredible art and music scene, and I think it's something that I work, the locals love it, and tourists are going to love it too. Colorado is the number one state in the country for the music industry, and we've got Red Rocks, and just dozens of other outdoor amphitheaters and things like that. And I think having some small version of that for ourselves, some kind of stage, some kind of amphitheater, keep doing like our First Friday Music, having music all over town is just another source of tourism that I don't care a lot about. I think it would be really effective. I know the Blues Plus previously was one of the bigger events for tourism in town, and, yeah, I think we should definitely keep, keep doing music. And the summer, actually, as far as I know, is the biggest music festival that's happening in Trinidad, and we're hosting that here at the Well, and we think we're going to bring in at least 150 people from outside of Trinidad for, for the two days. As far as hotel and hotel marketing experience, in New Orleans, there was three years of a management role inside the Cataculla Hotel, and I ran all the marketing campaigns that increased the revenue 60% in one year. And of that, 90% of the business is from tourism. Joe mentioned some of it before, as we work in very similar fashions, but using something like geo-targeting. So, New Orleans Saints, the football team, we would geo-target, you can basically just draw a little circle right around the stadium, and advertise directly to them, come to happy hour after, or come to stay at the hotel, and it works, you know? We could do the same thing in a bigger and better fashion of picking out places that we get a lot of tourists from, you know, Houston, Dallas, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, Denver, Springs, Alamosa, different areas around, and target the people that, that, you know, have what we want to be known for, you know, for our biking, for our trails, for our architecture, for our art, and give each one of them an individual experience that shows them exactly, you know, what they're interested in. Something that you're not really going to see with something like a billboard or a print campaign. So I'm a, I'm a big fan of digital, the speed, the cost, the flexibility, but also, every single bit of it is 100% trackable. So I know we had someone, a candidate before, that mentioned that not all of that is trackable. Modern marketing campaigns, every penny you spend is trackable. It has to be. I know when I would report to my clients, when I had my own marketing firm, I have to explain where every single dollar is going, and then show them, then what is the return, and there has to be data to back it up. Otherwise, they're not going to renew their contract with me. So, I 1,000% believe it is an absolute must, that we must hire an external marketing firm. And I think if we don't do that, it would be an unbelievable mistake, and we're going to be sitting here three years down the road kicking the can. I think it is unbelievably essential that we do hire an outside marketing firm, and I think that we move quick with this. And I think- And I think if we move quickly, to some small extent, we can have marketing for this tourism season coming up this summer, and we could see a huge increase around town. So, someone mentioned there might be a number like a hundred thousand dollars or something for the cost. What we need to ask them is what, what's the ROI, you know, what's the return gonna be? And generally, on digital marketing-type campaigns, the return is a three or a four on what you're spending. So, we could see huge changes over the summer, we could see huge numbers of tourism, even just if we're marketing on a small scale. You know, hearing there was a six-thousand-dollar magazine ad with no tracking on there just absolutely breaks my heart. With six thousand dollars, with using simple video marketing, fifteen-second little clips that everyone on their phone is just looking at while they're driving up I-25, just to try to ride past us, we could get them in off the exit so easily, I promise you. It's nowhere near as complicated as it sounds. We don't have to spend a billion dollars on it, it's fast, it's effective, and any campaign that's not working, you can quickly change it. So, I think that digital is a hundred percent the way to go, and that really needs to be where we focus on to get to the next level of tourism in Trinidad. So, that is something that I am doing day-to-day, and I believe I would be an asset on, on helping to hire a digital marketing agency, and if they are not doing what they say they're doing, I can call them out on it, and I can help lead that direction, so they're being held accountable for. And if they're not giving us the results that they are supposed to be, then, you know, they will be held accountable. So, that's accountability and data are really important to me. So, our bar and restaurant, one of the best new businesses, we're in Los Angeles County, and we have a hotel opening this summer, so the unique perspective on tourism in Trinidad, it's ultimately extremely important to us, and I'm already running marketing campaigns on it day-to-day, so I think I have a lot of value to offer. So, this might have changed, I made this during my previous presentation, but this was noted for the previous board, that to serve on the Tourism Board, an applicant shall be a resident and registered voter of Los Angeles County who is actively involved in a tourism-related business or industry within the city of Trinidad. So, don't know if that's still a qualification, but I do hit it on all those marks. And I would say even that if I'm not brought to this board, I do highly recommend bringing in people from the biking industry, the outdoor industry, at least someone from the digital marketing industry, and as Don mentioned, that are entrepreneurs as well, so I think they offer unique perspectives on, you know, what's needed in town, and we talk with a lot of the tourists in town as well, so we can help really lead that with a unique perspective over a citizen. Why we ended up here in Trinidad, incredible architecture, history, the culture, and really the people is really what has hit strong here. The community's been really welcoming, we absolutely love it down here. There are so many fun, unique, and interesting people down here, and we hear the same thing when we speak to tourists as well. There's beautiful views and easy access to mountain biking all over town. You never know which mountain is peeking right around the next corner, and that's something that's really, really unique. Not a lot of places can offer that. Obviously, Fisher's Peak State Park, as it continues to develop, is gonna be absolutely incredible draw and asset to this area. And we are just such at a great location for passing right into Colorado. I mean, soon as you pass into Colorado, the view changes drastically, and it immediately makes you want to get out of your car and go do something, you know? You wanna get off the highway, and go take a walk, go get some food, go see some culture. And I think marketing right around that area, when people are coming into town, could really bring a lot of people into this town really easily, because they're already driving by us. We just gotta wave and let them know that we're here. So again, extensive expertise in tourism marketing, and digital marketing in general. You know, I do have skin of the game with the Well Hotel and Tap Room. I believe strongly in data-driven decisions, and I'm also able to make decisions that are best for the community as a whole, tourism as a whole, and that not necessarily have an impact for us. So ultimately, if there's an event that I know is not gonna help us out, but it's for the good of everyone, I'm all for it. I'm not gonna be one of those people that strives to only do things that benefit myself. So, where we are right now, or I believe in our tourism marketing timeline, is we're kind of in the awareness stage of Trinidad. Some people know about us, some don't, but I think really getting the word out is where we are, and doing that digitally will be the fastest and most effective way, with a few other means thrown in there, but current modern marketing campaigns are generally about ninety to ninety-five percent digital. So I think that's definitely where we start. And again, we target the people that have interests in, you know, in what we're good at, in outdoor recreation, and biking, and in our music and arts culture. People will then research Trinidad online, and again, we want to make sure that we're the ones telling the story about that, and they're not finding it from, you know, some third-party article. And then, from there, the tourist is in Trinidad. So I think some of the best ways that we can increase tourism and lodging revenue is from, you know, musical events, as mentioned, that's a huge draw in Colorado, and people think nothing to drive three hours to go to a musical in this state. So, I think there's quite a few people within three hours that we could bring down here for some of the right events with a public and private partnership. And outdoor recreation, where we're already starting to see it, and we are just at the tip of the iceberg. Like, it is, it is just gonna explode here soon, so making sure that we're telling the story to people, and we're actively showing them who we are, what we can do, is gonna continue to bring people here, and just letting them know that we're out here again, you know, making sure that we're targeting where they are. This is where the people are, they're right here, they're on their phones, more than they should be. Let's make sure that we're there too. Thank you.
Questions?
Not a question, just you're very detail-oriented, and you sure you leave anything out? You don't want to be the same.
I can make it twenty pages long.
I appreciate it.
Well, you know, listening to you talk about Trinidad invigorates me, because I'm an old-school, old-school native. I hate that, but I am. It's really nice, before I ask a question, it's really nice to see Trinidad through somebody else's eyes. Just one question, so you've got one business, and you're starting to open a hotel. Do you have the time to devote to actually recreating the Tourism Board in Trinidad?
Absolutely. I've got a fantastic staff that can handle most things for us, and as we continue to grow, we will bring on more, and we've got a lot of experience in this field, so we really weren't reinventing the wheel. So yes, I do have time for the board.
Thank you.
The only thing that I have, you know, and it's been to, like, everybody that you spin up here has always said they would like to, except for one or two, would like to hire somebody to do the advertising. But you know, I have a point there that if you hire somebody from somewhere else, what the heck do they know about Trinidad? So you need somebody from Trinidad, the digital part, I agree, you probably would need to get. What I think, we got enough people in Trinidad, and people that are part of the history, they know the growth, they know the recreation area, they know the swim. And I think that's where we'd make a big mistake, if we hired somebody else that wasn't from our community to do this. Because they're the ones that, we've lived here all our lives, we know what the history is, and where everything is, and, you know, most of the trails, everybody, well, a few always been everywhere. But I think that's important, that we don't exclude that. We need to get somebody from our area, and I'm sure we have a lot of qualified people in this area that can handle doing that. And I don't have an objection to, like you say, the formal digital and stuff, because we may need somebody for that, you know? But I think we don't want to overlook that. We want to get people to know our community, and as far as, you know, everybody says, what do we want to be? We want to be all the things that Trinidad gives, the recreation, the theaters, the architect, whatever. Not just one particular thing to focus on, we want to focus on all of it. And I think that's all part of the tourism, and all part of the deal for Trinidad. And I think you did a really good presentation, and I think that's something the tourist board should look at, doing that, is to get someone that's in our area, even several people, to try to bring all this to light to the people of Trinidad, to the people driving through, and get some ideas to make it worthwhile for people to stop here, because this is a great place that you only have. And I just don't want people to think, you hire some guy from Denver or somewhere else, what the heck does he know about Trinidad?
I understand and respect your opinion, and I agree with a lot of that. I think our board on, part of being on the Tourism Board is to be the liaison of being local people here, and then we can convey the message that we want to, but then handing it to an expert that knows, I mean, someone who's done tourism-type marketing before, you know, someone that, preferably that has done it for a municipality, and shown, you know, effectiveness, and then shown revenues going up and that kind of stuff. So if they happen to be here in Trinidad, that's fine, but I would just like for them to be a professional, proven, you know, this is what they do day-to-day, you know? Preferably, there's someone that has, you know, they have a, they have, you know, someone that does video, you know, someone that does social media, someone that does websites, someone that does photography, someone that does copywriting, they're familiar with all of this stuff, and they have different people that can work on all that at the same time, so it goes quickly. And while we want to have local people to be able to make sure we're hitting the right points here, I think also having a third-party perspective on some other things that we might not, that we might even miss, and then coming upon agreeing at the end, and making sure we're doing the right thing. So if that, if there's a company like that, that has, you know, a proven track record here in town, that's great, you know? I just would like to be a, you know, a professional firm with a track record that's proven to do the specific thing that we're asking them for, so if they're in town, that's great.
I think that's an interesting discussion. The way I look at it is, we all know why we love it, we're here, but do we know how to effectively convey that message out to get other people here, how to reach those people? I have no idea how to do that. So that, I think you, you bring up the reasons why having people who do that for a living, and that you can hold accountable whether or not it's working, is a really important thing. One thing we haven't talked about is the importance of drawing conventions to Trinidad. Do you think that's an important thing that we should focus on?
That's a fantastic idea, and I know something that we privately have been working on, trying to do. We actually had one last summer, I think it brought in sixty people that stayed here. Half of them stayed here about a week, and another half probably stayed here three or four days. Yeah, it was for a photography convention, so actually crossed over into our art market, and we wanted to, we want to do lots more of that.
Okay, great. I think some of it was tracked, the fact that the money that we get comes purely from people being at hotels or Airbnbs.
Absolutely.
So it has to somehow get people into those businesses in order for us to take that money and make money.
Absolutely, yeah. I understand the role of getting people to stay the night, because that is how, you know, a lot of my marketing experience has gone, so I definitely understand the importance of that.
Great.
And one thing that I wanted to mention before, so you kind of hear it a lot when it's, you're hiring someone to do plumbing or electrical, and you always hear, well, there's always someone that can do it cheaper, and that doesn't work out a lot for you, so. I think that point is extremely valid here.
I appreciate you talking about the digital aspect, and how you were able to measure and track immediately what you put into the project. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure, I can just kind of give you like a vision for like a simple ad campaign that pretty much any modern marketing company would want to do something like that. So, let's say that, you know, we decide Houston is a good place to target, so maybe we split that into people that are interested in mountain biking. So we're taking a percentage of the population, and we're showing them advertising mediums about Houston. So, then what we can do is we can track them along I-25, so as I mentioned about kind of geo-cycling, you can just circle areas on a map, and when they start, we can see the people that interacted with this ad, meaning they're showing some kind of interest in bicycling in Trinidad, and they're familiar. Then, when they start driving up I-25, another ad that just sits there and does absolutely nothing until it's triggered, where these two kind of talk to each other, where we saw they had interest in bicycling in Trinidad, and now they're driving up I-25 right for us. Now we show them another one, now we show them another one here further up I-25, they get past Semerole, they get another one here, and we can continue to tell our story in five, ten, fifteen-second video clips and images, until like they can't wait to get off the highway to come and stop by, and we follow them. And we're talking pennies, literally pennies, that we can do that for only the people that showed interest in that. So, you start out a little broader, and you continue tightening it to, to it's the fifteen or twenty people that followed it all the way right into town, and those fifteen or twenty cars could be quite a bit of revenue for just one campaign that might not have cost us fifty dollars. So I think, done correctly, the effectiveness and efficiency, and just the price is really spectacular, and it might surprise.
Appreciate it.
Might surprise me.
Thank you. So, you said may have cost us fifty dollars, how many people is that reaching?
It just kind of depends, but that is, again, another statistic that'll show you, it'll show you a different staff or impressions if it was just out there versus the people that you can tell actually read it, like they kind of stopped on their phone for a second, or maybe they clicked. Being able to click and read and go to different pages is another way that you're able to do it. So I can't give you an exact amount for how much, you know, how many people it was shown to, but I can tell you it was shown to the right people.
Sure. So, I really, really appreciated your presentation, and you mentioned, you know, we're always on our phones, and I have to admit, while you were speaking, I got curious, so I looked at my phone. I apologize for that. But, you know, I put in Well Hotel and Tap Room, I don't think I've ever seen this before. I scrolled through literally six-and-a-half screens, and all of that content is specifically for your place in Trinidad, and I'm sure that's by design, not by accident.
Sure is.
But I, since I use the name, I put Tap Room near me, and the preponderance of three pages was that. So I mean, my point is, your presentation says you can do it, and my phone proves it.
Thank you.
It's an observation. And something that I wanted to say is more generally related to this broader discussion. All of us up here, I can, I say this with assurance, we really take this seriously, and we want to see the success of Trinidad, and that's small businesses, privately-owned businesses, even the large businesses, because that's what makes Trinidad, right? So, I think we really, really need to bear in mind, we're talking about organizing a group of people who are going to decide how to best spend a certain sum of money that was collected from people staying overnight, and that money's intention is to go out and magnify people coming to Trinidad, which in turn will spend nights in Trinidad, and buy services, meals, and products here in Trinidad. So, you know, if we spend dollars outside of Trinidad, we're going to multiply the dollars spent in Trinidad. So we're still spending dollars outside, we're still really supporting dollars spent at our local businesses. It's a, I think, a really good way to leverage our money. In your opinion, and I'm sort of essence of everybody in their profession, and I don't have enough knowledge about what you do really to ask you industry-specific, but it seemed to me you may have a lot of knowledge about overnight combinations and that sort of thing. We're not known as a, say, a destination for staying overnight, ID maybe, you know? Suddenly forgot the word. Study groups for people to come and study one thing at a time, photography. Study, study groups for people to come and study one, one thing at a time, a, a photography, that sort, that sort of thing. I forgot the word. That being said, what, what will it take to be known as a city that hosts, um, yeah, conventions? I'm sorry for the word. Totally left. That is a long meeting. Uh, what, what will it take for us to be known as a convention city? What, what steps do we have to put in place together?
Um, so just kinda how you, you went and Googled, you know, us to make sure, uh, I knew what I was talking about, at least up here too. Um, I mean, when we Googled Trinidad, that's how stuff from the city and tourism-related measures should be coming up, you know? Um, so having this information about let's just, let's write an article about having conventions in Trinidad and get it on, you know, a, a city website somewhere. How does one do that? Um, let's make, uh, an easy form to fill out because a lot of people do not like, uh, picking up the phone now. Let's put a phone number on there too. Something easy they can find out, someone from, whether it be, uh, uh, tourism or, um, I'm not sure who the correct contact will be, but they're like, hey, we've, we've got five hundred people that we wanna bring down here. How do we get started? And let's have a process in place for that. We could have it analyzed to, you know, what areas, what local businesses, what public places, um, you know, things like space to create. Who can handle that on different things, have recommendations, let's, let's have our ducks in a row. So when they call us, we know we're not fumbling around and trying to get stuff together. Like, you know, you gotta be ready for it because you get one right call and like, you don't wanna lose that opportunity. And we have one, we bring in, um, you know, some local photographers and, and video and, and, and just show the proof of concept. You know, just seeing that we've done this or, you know, some of the great photography from, from our, our street festivals and, um, some from this weekend, you know, would be great to just kinda show that, you know, we know how to, how to host people. And maybe it's something that, um, you know, collectively as an area, we, we grow and learn how to do better. But we can do some pretty simple steps right now to be ready for it. And I, I think it's a, a, a great opportunity for, for the town and a lot of people that are looking for something different. That are, they're, they're willing to drive a few hours away and we might be one of the, the few places that could still be affordable for them and then offer something different. And maybe they, they don't wanna go down I seventy and they're, they're sick of that. You know, we have something different to offer and let's just make sure that we're portraying that in, in the best way possible. And, you know, let's, let's talk about all, all the history and the architecture and get input from, you know, people that have been here their whole life and have amazing stories and, and tales and things that just everyone can learn about. Um, and just have it all right there easily, uh, uh, available. And it's, it's, it's really not that much, much work to do. It kinda sounds like a lot, but like that we mentioned right there, we could do that in a couple hours. You know, a professional could do that in a couple hours. And then when people are looking for places, cause right now, um, Google us for, for, uh, uh, Event Center in Trinidad and see what comes up number one. So we want that kind of, um, I researched what people search for the most on Google and they use words like event. And then I've made sure that we bring it at the top for that. So people are looking for weddings, events, things like that in town, they, they come to us. You know, kind of conventions and conferences are on a little bigger schedule, but, or, or like a little bigger scale, but it's same kinda thing, you know? Researching what is, what people are searching for and then making sure you show up there.
You know, I wanna make one small observation. I, I wanna be, uh, clear about that. I wasn't double checking you, I was just following your mantra. I was following your mantra, uh, decision, uh, making decisions.
That's where you start on Google.
Alright, thank you.
You know, talking about conventions and that, there are a lot of them out there. And, uh, just to give you an idea, this is probably before, you know, you came to Trinidad. Uh, but in, in twenty-ten, uh, we started the, uh, Mount Mountain Days. And there were groups that went down to, um, Lahana and said, how about Trinidad? Um, we ended up bringing them here. I think there were three of them, someone down there, uh, bringing them and said, what about Trinidad? And I think it brought in, I don't know, three, four hundred people, just a two-day event. That was one. Couple of years ago, uh, the Action Twenty-Two Group was being held in, uh, Pueblo. And, uh, I talked to the director there and I said, have you ever considered reaching out someplace else? And they said, no. But I said, why don't you move to, uh, have a, in Trinidad? So we had it in Trinidad here a couple of years ago. And that brought in a couple hundred people. Uh, we've had, CBW have brought, had their annual conference here. Uh, Gokul has been here. Uh, there's a couple of others that have, you know, and I, I think it would be who? Any of us and anybody who's a mayor coming up, whenever you go to meetings, to be aware that there may be places that, uh, maybe looking elsewhere. And then they can get ahold of the tourism, how to market the whole thing and what else to do while they are here. And I think that's important for them to come back. Cause that's one thing that I hear from a lot of people is that they come to Trinidad. I just, uh, talked to somebody here recently, never going to Trinidad, I love it there, I'm gonna come back. So it's, it's interesting, you know, those, those mindsets that once they come to Trinidad, how, how they feel about.
Exactly.
Just, just.
I agree, that's, I, I, I feel similar feedback from the guy.
Uh, you know, I feel like we have kinda set a basis for, you know, outdoor recreation and destination. Do you feel that way?
Yes, I think so.
Do you feel that, uh, you know, like I brought that question up earlier, I mentioned that, uh, those hundred thousand dollars that they were picking up, to pay for a marketing firm, do you feel that that's adequate? Do you think it's too high? Do you think it's too low?
Um, I, I would, I would need to look at it and understand kinda what it includes. I, I haven't personally seen it, um, I.
Do you think that's out of the norm? Do you think that's within the norm of something?
I just don't know what it includes. Uh, it, it sounds like it could be reasonable. Um, I, I just, you know, I'm not sure what exactly is included in there. But, um, I do have a lot of experience in contracts of that size and would be able to look at it and see if they're kinda pulling our leg or if it seems like it would be fair, so.
You mentioned that, uh, you know, if you had a marketing firm that came in here and didn't do the job, and we weren't paying them, how would you hold them accountable?
Well, you, you hold them accountable every, every step of the way. Um, and you make sure that a contract is written in a way that you don't tie yourself in a loop. There's also performance-based contracts that, that some people can do. They, they don't like those, I know. That, that'll make sure that people are, are accountable.
Nice, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, we have Ashley Ryan.
This is going to be a copy of my company's impact statement for the year of twenty-twenty-two as well as a copy of my resume. If we can use it at your own leisure. Don't have a beautiful presentation to present, I'm just gonna let you guys know a little bit about me and what I had in mind when I put in this application. Uh, my name's Ashley Ryan. I moved here with my family in June of twenty-sixteen. Um, I feel like Trinidad kinda called me here. Our very first visit to the town was to look at homes for purchase. Um, so I had a friend that was here, sent me all kinds of photos, told me about Trinidad. We kinda found love from afar. We knew we wanted to move to Colorado. Um, and when we got here and looked at homes, we decided, yeah, this is it. Um, I have four children, my three boys all graduated from here in the last few years. Um, they're all, all over twenty. I also have a ten-year-old who is in fourth grade. Um, I have been in the hospitality industry, I have eleven years of hospitality, um, hotel, uh, seven of which were at Cusada Casino Resort in Kendall, Louisiana, as a guest service manager at one of their hotel properties there. Um, it gave me a lot of exposure to many, many, many management training courses, um, lots of those in conflict management. Um, I moved here and joined the cannabis industry. I've spent the last five years in the cannabis industry, the last three of those with Native Roots. I've been the manager of Native Roots for a year or two now. Gosh, I can't remember. I started at Native Roots as a part-time bartender in twenty-nineteen. I became, um, supervisor, assistant manager and manager all within two years. Um, Native Roots is really good at spending money in communities, uh, for their impact statement. So now that I'm settled into my role there, um, it is my job, I feel, to get them to spend their money here. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard our new ad on the radio. I had to fight tooth and nail for that. Um, because Trinidad is not the common market. Like Native Roots is a company that have twenty-six stores across Colorado and their primary source of marketing is digital. Um, just that everything they do is digital or print in the larger, uh, like magazines up in the Denver area. Um, so for me convinced them to do a radio ad, cause that's what we needed here in Trinidad, um, took me a while, but I got it.
I did it for you.
You did it? Yes, thank you very much. It took me two years to get that. Um, finally we got it. Um, I also got them to put a billboard inside of New Mexico. So I don't know if you've headed from Raton into Trinidad, we do have a billboard up there. Um, so now that I'm settled into my career, um, I wanna give back to my community. Um, I really like it here, I wanna make, you know, what, do whatever I can to make it a great place. I applied for this particular board because I do have hospitality and tourism industry, um, experience. That word just. Um, and I do think that this is a great place with a lot of potential. I've heard a lot about, um, the outdoor recreation here. Uh, I do have a background in biology, I have a degree in biology from Anthony State University. Um, I thought that I would be spending my career studying bats or tagging mares. I had no idea that it was gonna be where I'm at right now. Um, I wanted to be out in nature, so being here, I feel like I am. My first year here, we had, the first week here, we had a bear across the street, um, an elk across the street, you know, it was amazing. Um, and while we have that, where I'm from in a small town in Louisiana, it wasn't, you know, we don't get the big, big animals like that. Um, one thing that I, I did hear you guys say a lot about outdoor recreation and, um, the art scene. Um, I do not hear a lot about the cannabis industry. Um, I know that over the last year since New Mexico has legalized their cannabis, that our industry has kinda dropped off here. I do feel like we are still a draw. I do see a lot of out-of-state people at my store. I'm at X eleven next to Wendy's, so I'm kinda like the first stop here. Um, we do anytime anybody asks anything, we recommend a hundred percent. I, I, if you go there now, I have flyers posted all over for the June third event. Um, I think there's some stuff up there for Santa Fe, the Trail Days. Um, I'm interested in getting information from, for the rodeo. I reached out to Carlos for a flyer for the Fly Fishing Film Festival. You know, I want to do my part to promote Trinidad where I'm at cause I feel like people stop there. It's the first exit in Colorado with a gas station hood. So if they're stopping there and going in my store, I'll make sure they know I have a wonderful community climbing. Um, I would, I do feel like cannabis should have a seat at the table. Um, I have been kind of reaching out into the local government a little bit here. I've been watching the council meetings, uh, when I can. Um, I have attended a few of the tourism boards. Um, I have recently become a member of Team Cafe, um, what I call the Cafe Williams Memorial Committee. Um, I, I'm entrusted in marketing there. How that happened, I don't know. Um, I just have a tendency to be like, ooh, let's do this, let's do that, let's do this, let's do that. So I have like a bunch of things lined up for us over the summer. Um, including like we're gonna have a booth at the farmers market. Um, we're gonna be a part of the June third presentation. Um, hoping to have a table at Santa Fe Trail Days. I'm hoping to do a lot in town with that particular group. I believe strongly in that. Um, um, the other thing that I'm kinda sort of didn't much of in was the, um, Trinidad Historic Preservation Commission. I was kinda thinking about being a little more active in that in that I like what they're doing. I love history, history was my second. Uh, I've got a degree in college, my mom got sick, I ended up on bachelor school for a history degree. I did not complete that degree however. But history is a good passion of mine, which is I think a lot of what drew me here. Um, if you go in the bank, there's this wonderful picture of all the cowboys in front of the bank. I just, that's my favorite picture in Trinidad. Uh, and the fact that Doc Holliday got ran out of here by Bad Masterson, I think that is fantastic. Um, and it really made me smile, it's two of them, one of my favorite movies, um. I just think that, um, I, I've noticed that not a lot of my cohorts in the cannabis industry, I don't think I've met or seen anyone from the cannabis industry at any of the things that I have been going out to over the past few months. Um, I think that's a missed opportunity both for my industry and the city of Trinidad. Uh, so I, I'm just gonna do what I can, I'm gonna reach out, see what I can do to make this place better and hopefully get in where I feel in.
Questions?
Ashley, anything else you would do in addition to what you've already said to create a more viable economic impact in tour?
Um, right now I'm trying to hook them up with the, um, Fort Woodland as far as Native Roots. Um, um, because we are, Native Roots is really about veteran affairs and diversity, equity and inclusivity. So I do have them in contact with the, um, the board over, uh, William is the name? William Phillips? Bill Phillips? Yes. Um, I put him in contact with my PR people, hopefully they will have, um, I'm hoping that we can contribute to their restoration efforts um, for the hall, cause I know they need a lot of work in that hall. Um, I also have them putting forth sponsorships wherever I can. Um, I reach out to everybody I know. If you have anything that needs a sponsorship that does not include children, if it says anything about a kid, we aren't gonna do it because we can't. Um, but like you, the play garden, I said, I can't do play garden because it has play in it. So we're gonna avoid that one. But anything else like in town that needs a sponsorship or anything, send it to me. I can pass it on to my, uh, either my PR team. If it's something that's gonna be veteran-related or diversity, equity and inclusivity oriented. Or I can send it to my marketing team if it's gonna be something that needs a sponsorship. Like I think we're in on Santa Fe Trail Days. And, um, the June third, PR is gonna do a sponsorship for that, for that Echoes of History presentation meeting. Um, wherever I can get those, spend money in town, I'm trying.
So it's interesting that you're, you're in the cannabis industry. Do you think the tourism board number one can improve the cannabis industry here in Trinidad? And do you think they should do that?
I think that, yes, I think cannabis has been a vital part to Trinidad's success over the past few years. And, um, I think that we can do a lot for each other. Um, especially since, you know, recreation and art don't exclude cannabis. As a matter of fact, some of it really does include cannabis. I'm gonna pull, I'm trying to get my company to do a marketing scheme that would fit, um, feature local artists or musicians or something. And then have like a little blurb about their creativity, if they consume during creativity, their favorite way to consume during creativity, and then just a little pay. Um, I'm working with, um, a young lady that works for me right now. She is also an artist here in town. Um, she will be putting together a little mock-up and I'm gonna pay her out of pocket. So I can send that up to my marketing team. Cause I asked them for this a few months ago and they didn't do it. So I'm not gonna wait for them to do it. I'm gonna do it and I'm gonna send it to them and say, here's what I did, put this on your Instagram. You know, with a little Native Roots Trinidad, Colorado, and blah, blah, blah. Um, so I, I think that I can get them to do things to drive people here. Um, just because it's in their own best interest to do so.
And they have a whole community listening, they get.
There you go.
I'm all for it, let's do it.
Hi. I, I think you make a good point. I think there is room for the voice of that industry of tourism. Is it your experience that your customers, if you know, spend the night here when they come?
Um, some, but not all. Um, I think that that could be a roomful of room. You know, I just don't think that they have a lot of ideas about what's going on here. Um, and I try to encourage people when I can. For instance, a gentleman came into the store the other day, I was checking in. He said something, he was going up to somewhere for a fly fishing trip. And I said, oh, do you know that we're hosting a fly fishing film festival here? He's like, no, I'm gonna have to Google that. So if I, if I feel like I can say, hey, guess what, we're doing that here, come here and do that, um, that, that'd be great. Um, I do want to, uh, they told me I could do it. I haven't really gotten, I just joined Chamber of Commerce. So I'm hoping to make some connections through there and get them to help me to set up. I'm gonna set up in my lobby, I have a little area. And set up a little thing with local businesses and what's to do in Trinidad, that kind of thing. So hopefully I'll be working on that here shortly.
I noticed when you, um, on your application, you said you had ten hours a month that you could devote to this. What if it takes more?
I have all the time. I just didn't wanna be like, I'll just give you everything. You know, I'm very, very flexible. Um, as far as my work is concerned, this is part of my work. Um, just because that's kinda how I presented it to them, here's what I'm gonna do to help me build business at my store. Um, so I, you know, as long as I have coverage at the store, which I do for the most part right now. I have a really, really awesome staff. If I had to go away for a week or two, they'd be fine without me. Um, not saying that that's something I, well, vacations nowadays, but you know, um, but they are pretty self-sufficient, um, so I feel like I have more time than that. I just wanna be like, okay.
So how long have you been in the cannabis industry? You said like?
Uh, five years.
In those five years, do you feel like, um, this side of the aisle has loosened up and wants to work with cannabis or is it still kind of a tight relationship?
I'm not gonna lie, when I first started approaching my company about doing more in Trinidad, one of the things my PR person said to me, but she was not sure about how it would be received.
Right.
Um, you know, and I think that was back to some kind of call or something that someone with my company was in on, where they had heard some displeasure expressed with the cannabis industry. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what meeting or what they were listening to, uh, but I think that kinda spooked them. Uh, but I, my approach to this is, if you guys are not okay with the cannabis industry, the worst that you can do is tell me no. I'm not afraid to ask. You know, I'm not afraid to say, hey, I wanna be a part of this. Please let me be a part of this. And the worst you can do is say, nah, go away. Um, but that doesn't mean that I'm paying you. I am pretty persistent. I'm like, okay, well, let me sneak in here and do these fifties and by the way, I'm in the cannabis industry, you know? I think, I think it has gotten more open, um, I think that people are more accepting now. Um, I think that this past year, having New Mexico Go Recreational really opened a lot of people's eyes. And, you know, it, and we can only benefit each other, I think. I think my success is tied to Trinidad's success.
Um, so it's, it's overused, uh, euphemism, but, um, you know, they say a rising tide floats all boats, ships, uh, cadres, stakes, whatever you wanna use. But, um, I, I think what you said is, um, it's, it's really important that we don't lose track of, um, the cannabis industry is definitely, um, is and has been a major contributor to Trinidad's economic success. That, that being said, it's, it's getting more and more difficult because as states legalize around us, we go from a destination city based on just the availability of having the twenty-whatever shops, um, so people are gonna stop early. But if we can cause more people to be here more often, um, that's going to be one added facet of people being able to be here. So, you know, they'll come here for the festival, the whatever we're doing and take advantage of the shops. So what's, what's good for Trinidad, it should be good for the cannabis shops. What's good for the cannabis shops should be good for Trinidad, that's my take. And in the vein, it makes good sense to have an industry representative, that's, um, I agree with you. It's hard to say what, what can we do to remain or stay a cannabis destination. I mean, as, as places legalize, we're just taking the extreme to people, really. But do, do you see anything that, that could help that?
Um, right now, um, you know, this company is very large, um, they're very, I'm like, they actually go anywhere. We have a lot of corporate money to back us up. So we'll be in the game for a while, um, despite the, you know, I might have to lay people off, but I'm not gonna close the store. Um, right now in Denver, uh, my company is sponsoring or working with a private chef, a chef, and he offers an experience. Um, he'd offer a whole meal that's cannabis infused. Um, of course, they have to do like the regular, they have to be very careful with their doses and stuff, so they're gonna tell you everything that's in it. Uh, but it's an experience. You go there, you have this gourmet dinner that's infused, uh, maybe get some product, um,
Would that be a happy night? So.
Yes, wow.
You just spell that in foreign.
I thought you said you asked me, I think it happened to me. But no, and that kind of thing, um, I know venues in Denver are just starting to become a thing where you actually have a place where you could go and partake of that, that's not, um, in a public setting. Um, there are hotels that can be catered towards that, um. There are tours that we could set up, um, as part, you know, we have facilities here, we have mint facility quota. Um, we have groves all over the place. We could do a bunch of stuff with that. That would be a draw, especially, I, I dare say that might even draw some people from other states who are going into the cannabis industry. Um, perhaps we can target some advertising for those guys.
Conventions?
Conventions, cannabis conventions. Listen, you know, I, you guys were talking about conventions and I'm like thinking, I would just be like, what groups need conventions is start calling people. Uh, you know, that's, that's how I do a lot. I just start calling people. Um, I was working for, um, a cannabis company that shall not be named. Wasn't a great company, here in Trinidad and they are no longer here in Trinidad. I'm sure that gave it away, but part of my job was to find wholesale product or to sell wholesale product. I got, I bought and I sold. I just printed out the, uh, list of everybody with a license from Med, from the Metrix website, and I just started calling people. I mean, why not? The worst they're gonna say is, no, hang up on me. Might get a little pissed out, I'm never gonna see those people. You know, nobody's gonna see me for calling for business, but you know, I mean, thinking outside of the box is kinda what I'm good at.
I just wanna say, you know, thank you for the perspective from the cannabis side of the industry. Thank you for that. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. Amanda, all right, what's your next?
Well, I didn't bring a resume. I just thought I'd bring you a bag. You got two.
I need another one.
You chose the first two?
No.
Uh, and that's what I created for, uh, Women of Los Anamos County. Uh, my name is Amanda Corr. Mommy, my husband and I lived here for nineteen years. I have a degree in graphic design and art history from Texas Christian University from the eighties. I have been doing marketing for about the past thirty-six years. A lot of what I've done and what I've learned is about leverage and strategic partnerships. Which is kind of an example of what I was talking about earlier with, um, Winterfest. Partnered with Orfino County. We're partnering with World Journal, cause they've already been selling a whole lot of ads. So over my career, I've done a whole lot of that. I also, um, I built one business, I built two businesses, just opened up County Marketing Partners two months ago. I just made Women of Los Anamos County a five oh one C three. And I also am a business consultant with the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center. Uh, so in Trinidad, what that means is helping them with marketing plans, helping them where to find grants, where to find loans, all those kinds of things, which I think is very, very important. And especially in a, um, tourism aspect. Anyone that is coming to town, you need to be able to translate what that opportunity is to the retailers and merchants here. Cause a lot of people just say, oh, this event's coming up. They haven't thought about how can I participate, how can I leverage my business? Who else can I partner with to make a big impact on my own business? So that's what my area of specialization is. Um, I'm trying to think of some of the questions that y'all have asked earlier about, uh, conferences, bringing conferences here. I think one of the great key ways to do it is, um, some of the industry that we have here, large industry of power origination, right? Um, like maybe not New Elk, but I did talk to New Elk about, uh, are you part of the Colorado Mining Association? Have you gone to the lunches? Have you talked to them about maybe having conferences down here? And they hadn't, so I encouraged them to go out and do that. Does Evergreen do that? Do they participate in Colorado oil and gas things? Have they been talking about, hey, maybe we'll have some continuing education and bring conferences down here? So I kinda think it happens from an internal aspect, because I think conventions, the big idea of conventions, we don't have enough resources to do that. When we have a conference, you know, maybe it's fifty people, maybe it's a hundred and fifty. Yes, it's great for launching, but what about making sure that all the restaurants know that this is coming into town and that they're prepared to handle it? Cause it's a fantastic idea to have conferences, but you have to make sure that you have the infrastructure there, um, to do that, right? Um, what else? There's a couple of other questions that were asked.
You bring up a good point there, cause I remember back in the early Atlantic days, back then, the only thing that was available in town to have a large group like that was the Uitchan Museum. And we struggled putting together, okay, cause there were several hundred people here. And so that one, but now I think we just have more opportunity.
Yes, we have more opportunity and you and I have talked about, you need to make sure all the restaurants are open consistently and that they're aware of that there's a conference coming into town, so be on your toes, maybe hire extra help, et cetera, to hire, to, to handle those crowds. Over some of the other questions.
Are you gonna have enough time to do it?
Oh, that's, yeah, yes, yes, I will. Um, my primary business, I'm a financial advisor. We teach people how money works. I, I actually believe the key to prosperity is economic empowerment and creating a strategy. As with anything, it's about creating a strategy.